Montgomery County? No, I don't think it will. Also, gateways is a term that is discussed quite a bit in the Montgomery County Plan. Everything is a gateway to something else. The plan is a gateway to a zoning ordinance, right? So then the zoning ordinance is a gateway to something else. We all have to live with the gateways and they're tough. There's no free lunch on the gateway. You guys are sitting in a tiny, small gateway position and how you deal with the problems that come to you and get put on your desk, that is sort of a gateway to your getting Michael. And so, how I present myself may tell you some about whether you want my help. You know what I mean? So it is very often everywhere. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your listen.
I'm Charlie Beasley. I live in 1997 South 450 East, Crawfordville. It's my first time up here, so I'm probably gonna jump all to the board. I don't have notes. I've heard good and I've heard bad. The lady here said that people leave town, people are coming back, other people are coming in, so I see that. And we're staying at thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty thousand people. I personally see a big problem with that. You know, if you start hating all the farmland, putting houses up there, then you're gonna lose farmland, you're gonna lose food, you're gonna lose jobs. Somebody's gotta go to work longer, let's say, walk for longer. As far as the wind, somebody, I forget who it was, said somebody is an orange. That's all good for you. We're gonna spray it over the top of here and it'll be okay. I'm suffering from that now. Okay, so what they're saying is good today doesn't necessarily mean it's good tomorrow, like when Joe said Duckman, crap. That smells like crap, it's probably crap. There are other alternatives. I mentioned one, somebody, I wouldn't do that here, but there is another alternative to the wind, doesn't involve the wind at all. But again, this is my first time here, so if you ever jump all around, see a gentleman up here's got a hex, got the gas flag, don't tread on me. I think that's what zoning is doing. Tread whatever wants. Probably there is a need for it in town. I don't live out in county so much, except maybe the farm, hog farms. Again, no sex, so I don't believe in... I grew up when people grew their own farms, had their own farm, mom and dad had one and they could take care of their kids and now they can't. Because the bigger farm, you bought it out and put it in hog farm and earned it, had eighty thousand acres of corn or whatever they got. I don't know, I just wanted to kind of check this out, I wanted to make my opinion out a little bit. It may have to take, it's acceptable or not, but at least I said something.
Thank you.
Too awesome.
Gentlemen, we've got notes there, nothing written down. Keep in mind, once again, this is about planning zoning. This is not, I mean, we're dragging the wind farms into the not grow wind farm, they're against wind farm, but the bottom line is about planning zoning. This planning zoning ordinance that came out of, this is the one I have at least, the planning commission warned me, you know, through the comprehensive plan, which we were told that it was not planning zoning, but all of a sudden it switched over to planning zoning. And now we deal with this. And I understand that it has been worked on for some time, well, John, you've probably worked on it for two years. I think the county's only worked on it for about six months. You know, they have the comprehensive plan and meetings and so forth, and then all of a sudden now we've got this. But bottom line is, let's get it right. We're talking today about the hog farms, we talk, what about landfills, what about these things? And the other points in the comprehensive plan that was brought up, I don't see that mention focused on that. Now, maybe there's amendments that I haven't seen, but this is what, I'm not sure what the planning commission's duty is, but I was under the understanding that they were gonna look at it and make recommendations other than either for, against, or nothing. And they did, ready to do with no recommendation, which there had to be a reason why they did that. There was some question about how it was written. In fact, one lady said she could not vote for it the way it was written then, but not one alteration was made. Not one change, nothing was made. My feeling is, you need to send this back to the planning commission and get their recommendations and make sure that it covers these things, needs to be covered, and then bring it back. Keep in mind that we just celebrated seventy-five years ago, a battle called D-Day, and where these young men fought and died and gave their lives so that we may live in a democracy like we live in, and that we may have this, representatives of which we vote to put you in to represent us. And I do take with the will of the people. The comprehensive plan does not give you the will of people. A vote would give you the will of people. Let's instead of moving forward with this, which main objective is to stop wind farms, there's no question about that. And I'm not saying that that is the only issue that needs to be addressed. I'm saying that, that is the only issue that needs to be addressed, along with hog farms and landfills and a lot of other things too. So I just hold you guys to a standard of those young men who died and fought and died to keep this democracy going, that you do your part to keep it going in our county and move our county forward. I've heard that saying, a county that does not grow will die. My take on that is also that, but also be cautious, because a county that grows in the wrong direction will die faster. Thank you.
Rob Webster, thirty-seven twenty-nine West, four hundred north of Crawfordville. I'm a farmer. We make money off our farm. Our income per acre keeps going down year after year. The reason we signed up for the wind farm was to get stability in our income. I think you guys need to slow down on this. The CAPO issue just came up, okay? Farming has changed since the seventies. John, you was a young boy helping your dad and your grandpa at that time. You can remember going out with a four bottom block, probably maybe a twelve or fifteen foot disc. Look at what we're farming with today. How many hog farms, how many livestock farms were there back in the seventies? Just about every farm in Montgomery County had some kind of livestock. We've gotten away from the livestock on the grain. We've got farmers now that are looking at different ways to make money. We've signed up for the wind farm to help make more money. Some other individuals are wanting to put in hog farms to make more money for that farm. You know, they're not making any more new ground. We're having to find new ways to make more income for us farmers. I think you guys need to slow down. We need to have all of the chapters of this zoning ordinance voted on at one time. Because my impression right now is, your planning commission, it doesn't matter what recommendation they make, you three individuals have the final say so at any time. And I think you need to have favorable recommendations from the planning commission before you act. But if you pass part of this right now, then that gives you the authority to act on any other chapter in that zoning ordinance. I'm for zoning, okay? I can see the good in it. I can't be for this zoning plan though, because it infringes on my rights to make money on my farm. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rosal. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Jim Rosen, Wind County. Been here sixty-four years. Definitely against the windmills. I think if you want city-county, lose people would be when they struggle with it. There's a lot of places that sell around me right now because of the fear, the kind of, people are selling out, moving to typically get, beating the horses, people have just had nice, nice, nice places. So I hope you guys can get this gun, send it back to Kansas. Thank you.
Kathy Watkins, Sugar Creek. I'm with Mariah. I'm sick of this. I looked at my sheet this morning and it said, one year ago today, I was at a commissioners' meeting at the city building. Unbelievable. If ten years ago, you would have, not you personally, but if it would have been put on about, if it would have been talked about, if we had even been aware of what was going on, but paperwork was signed and got going, two years ago, we found out, and we've been fighting it forever since. It's too late to put it on. It's too late. We can't wait for this to happen. These guys, Apex, running by some, they wanna start this project by October. They want your tax credits, and our tax base, they'll be tax credits in instant style.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up from the back. I'll get you next over there, Miss Buckles.
Good morning. I'm Edna Bright, Region Three, Fairway Drive. A resident in Crawfordville for thirty-nine, forty years plus. Forty-five years ago plus, I watched my father oppose zoning in Putnam County. He could recite every word of the zoning petition in that time. That is forty-five years ago. If you're not familiar with Putnam County, you need to take a look to the south of us. At county line, we have heritage hazardous waste products. Their motto is, never waste an opportunity. This is an opportunity for our community to step forward and say, no, you're not coming onto Montgomery County land. They are in the process of purchasing, none of five hundred acres across the dirt road between Montgomery County and Putnam County. Now, if you're not aware of this, do your facts, on your phones, look it up, and find out for yourself. Their motto is, never waste an opportunity. The material doesn't come from here, the trucks come out of Indianapolis every day. It's hazardous material waste from Indy. If you come down on one thirty-six, or sorry, two thirty-six, and watch them come through Rochedale, to the rural area, you'll see this. A few years back, a little town of Morton wanted to reinstate what they had as a sale block operation. A large company came in and wanted to reestablish that property. At that time, my father was, okay, no big deal, until he realized that the sewage waste tank from that particular operation would run through his backyard through a stream. Okay, he stepped back and he said, thank you zoning, it didn't happen. The people in this room today will not be alive forty-five years from now, but your grandchildren and your children won't be. You think you're voting now to say no zoning? That operation of zoning will only move our county forward, and we don't entrust you gentlemen to move that county forward now. It'll happen sooner or later down the road, but it may not be these gentlemen here to take the step, and it may be worse than what we have today. Putnam County has moved forward. They have setbacks for the property lines, for the housing, but it's reasonable. I've seen it, I've lived it, I've watched my father oppose it for years, but it's worked in every aspect. They've discussed it, they have made amendments, and true, they add things to it, but they learn from that, and we will learn soon, if we sit here and entrust you gentlemen to take the next step for our community, and I believe you can today, take that next step, and then Montgomery County, the county, should. Thank you.
Good morning. Truce Buckle, seventy-two, twelve west, nine seventy north. Sorry, ladies, we wouldn't be here today. I'd like to say first that there's not bad people on either side of this mess. I am so tired, not only coming here and hearing all the arguments and the fighting. We have been personally attacked. Names have been posted on Facebook, they were passed around and it was encouraged to share these people's names as if we were evil people. We're not. There's good and bad. People are people, the world over, good and bad on both sides of the fence. We are not doing this to hurt our neighbors. We are very pro-environment. Anyone that knows me knows I am so pro-environment. I was on the Montgomery County Recycles Committee from the very beginning. I had recycled for decades. I went to the schools and I showed the kids how many pounds of garbage tree bake per I am pro-environment. I don't think it's going to happen. Okay, I've had lots in my life, plenty of it. It was a lot more to do with the environment. I think there's been huge amounts of misinformation out there floating around. I have done so much looking on information, I am so tired of it. I want to be home baking cookies. But I really wish that the planning commission, all of you people, could have gone to the table, sat down with Ron and Bison, and tried to hammer out common sense. I don't think it's going to happen. Maybe it will in the future. Hopefully, I think we needed. CAPOS? I don't want to live near CAPO. No, I don't want any park. I am pro-zoning, but I wish that we would not rush this, as I have said before. I have lived downwind of CAPO and there was fish kills all the time, it smelled terrible. I filmed them spreading their word, if you want to call it being knifed in, that's not what I call being knifed in, and it must not have been, because they called me on the phone and said, oh, he won't come up by your house. CAPOS are known to really wells. They get massive antibiotics, they cause all kinds of problems. I'm against that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
My name is Zachary O'Leary. I reside at forty-seven thirty-six West Crown Street, Crawfordville, Indiana. That is in the county of Brownsville, Indiana. I follow both sides of the zoning and windmill issue. I'm here this morning to say one way or another that windmills are a solution or not a solution, zoning is a solution or not a solution. I would just want the council to take into consideration state of our county, state of our economics as far as lower and middle class for our county here, and see that the decisions that are made affect the young majority. I'm twenty-five years old, I own three properties totaling just under seven acres in Montgomery County. I do see, as currently proposed, that zoning is quite costly, violating my rights, going on a work tour, to join the middle class and be able to own property in Montgomery County. Indiana is repeatedly on the anti-everything list. I want to see Indiana for something. I want to see Indiana go towards renewable energy and be able to say that we are at least doing something to fight the issues. Anyone that lives in Indiana, especially in our county this year, remembers two weeks ago, we were standing in water knee deep, farmers weren't able to plant or in fields. Now we're dry, we finally got a grid from God, so we can do something, but you cannot walk outside and say there's not issues going on that we're not adhering to. We need to look towards long-term solutions that affect all of us and mainly affect the young majority. I'm twenty-five years old, I want to start businesses in Montgomery County, contribute to our economy, and I want to be able to do the same for my family. I want to make sure that we are looking at all options and the people that are kind of in this community. I've never left this county, and at this time, I would not politely leave this county. Thank you.
Travis Lewis, ninety-one, nineteen, north, one hundred east. I'm here to talk to you about the hog factory. I won't call it a farm because it's more of a factory. And the people on one hundred fifty east where they're building, it's right on, they didn't move out there with the hog factory there. They're building on top of it. Their values, their property values are gonna go down fifty, seventy percent. They're either gonna walk away. They'll probably just walk away. And there's your people leaving the county, just like you were saying, you didn't want to leave. And it could even affect me on my own from there, it could affect me, it could affect a lot of people, Linda. But I really feel for the people on one hundred fifty east. I just think they're getting their own people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. I've been, oh, Becca Bykowski, Apex Clean Energy, and Montgomery County native, grew up in this area, and it's come a long way since I graduated from high school back in two thousand nine, and I recognize that what you guys are trying to do here is move the county forward in the right way, in the way that you truly identify the true will of the people. Now, I have an email here that I'd like to reference from Chris Hamm, which I know you guys know, but for those in the room, Chris Hamm is the senior planner that works for HWC Engineering, who is the firm that helped our county put together this plan. He let me know the exact figures because I do know that there have been some blurred lines as far as exactly how many people have participated in this plan. There were four hundred and fifty respondents to the online survey, and around two hundred people at the public workshops. Additionally, I spoke with sixty stakeholders. Now regardless of where you stand on wind, and I don't mean to just tell you where I stand, that's not why I'm here, I'm here to talk about the process, regardless of where you stand on this issue, these six hundred and fifty people plus these sixty stakeholders, the majority of those people may represent the statistics that you're presenting to this room today, but I feel the only real way to identify the true will of the people and to gather the feedback that everybody is here and has been giving you the past couple of years after this podium, people that feel like they're not being heard, that they don't have a chance to be collaborative in this process, give them the chance to do that. Put this on a ballot, pull a referendum, let us identify the true will of the people, because we're all here trying to give it to you, and we just want an opportunity to do this outside of this comprehensive plan that is ironclad and in stone right now, it's been voted on, because zoning ordinance is about to be just that, and it's incomplete. Regardless of what the county feels they want and don't want, I agree that everybody that's saying we need to do this right, this ordinance is incomplete, if everybody in this county truly does want to phase out wind, phase out CAPOS, they need to have the chance to tell you that they want this to be done right and they want it to be done collaboratively. So I encourage you gentlemen, in your best interest, to represent the will of the county and to leave your legacy as the commissioners here, do this the right way, because we want to be a part of the process.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. You gentlemen, one last chance, anyone have anything at the end here?
I'm set, Blackie.
I will tell you, there's one thing that came up, and once again, I try not to speak up during, but a majority, or not a majority, a lot of people have talked about a vote. I can tell you, it's not been in the last year or two, but I've been involved in county government since two thousand and five, and it was no secret when I went into county government, my stance on planning zoning. So for fourteen-plus years, people know that I've been in favor of planning zoning. That's not a secret. We made a call to the Attorney General's office in reference to a referendum on planning zoning, and we was told at that time, it did not qualify to be on ballot as a referendum. So, like I said, that's not, I don't know, right? I'm not in the Attorney General's office. If I, I mean, if I wanted to be an attorney, that's what I would have done. I mean, I can't answer that. I can't work that slow, that's why I didn't want to be an attorney. Sorry, Dan. But that call was made, like I said, that's been a few years back. My opinion's been the same since two thousand and five, and I thought that was the best chance to figure out exactly, because you know, we've heard the same argument, well, somebody heard it for more than that, I remember it's the last fifteen years, the same argument on this topic. That call was made to the Attorney General's office, and that's what we were told. So just to kind of clear that up. All right, hearing no more questions and no more comments from you gentlemen, I'll call for the question on two thousand and nineteen dash fourteen. All those in favor of passing ordinance two thousand and nineteen fourteen signify as saying aye. All opposed? Aye. Motion passes two to one. Moving on to the next ordinance, two thousand and nineteen dash fifteen. I'll turn it over to Dan for explanation on that.
This ordinance creates a zoning fee fund, zoning fee fund. In the zoning ordinance, it makes reference to application fees and user fees and fines. Currently, there would be no place at the county funds to place that money as a trail fund, and so this ordinance would create a zoning fee fund, which would allow the zoning administrator to deposit those user fees into a particular fund and then use those monies to trade the cost of the administration of the ordinance. This would be a non-reverdy fund. This is first reading.
Okay, any que, excuse me, sorry. Any questions for Dan on two thousand and nineteen dash fifteen? Okay, that'll be on the agenda for the June twenty-fourth, is that the, June twenty-fourth meeting, under set reading. Moving on to C, intersection ordinance, two thousand and nineteen sixteen.
This ordinance brings, makes a notice of chapter one fifty-five, and here you, or the section, and essentially, and you've seen one like this before, but it brings that chapter, you conform it with the new standards of the zoning ordinance, so it makes reforming changes come out. It leaves chapter one fifty-five, which is a permit ordinance, operational, align those new standards up in the state of zoning ordinance. This is first reading.
Any questions for the attorney on two thousand and nineteen sixteen?
Thank you. Is that public? Is this open?
Uh, no.
Or no?
No, it's not up for vote till next month.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, hearing none. Two thousand and nineteen seventeen.
This ordinance would establish a content breach policy from the building department. The Indiana legislature passed article one forty-two just this last session, signed it along by the governor, and it requires all the governments to adopt a content breach policy, which prevents building commissioners, building inspectors, building officers of any kind, from making determinations on any building permit which they have an interest. So you'll see on exhibit A, the policy, which would prohibit building officials from making any, participating in any... any, participating in any decisions which they have an interest. It requires notice to their department, their superior, specifically provides for disqualification of that official directly for frankly to do a bad case. If there is no qualified person in the building department who can carry out the duties of the disqualified person, then the ordinance also requires the county to hire a temporary official to do so. And it also makes various provisions of documentary retention and penalties of disciplinary action for those officials who have not followed this ordinance. The new law requires that a policy be in place by July first, so those citizens with action, remind the researchers that they can take action. Long may their.
Any questions for Dan on two thousand nineteen seventeen?
Would that be two readings or one? Two readings at one time? I'm going to reply.
Two readings, so this is one reading, you can end up here next to me, basically to make sure that if you have changes, we can put those.
Okay, next up is engineering, next engineering work order for landfill sampling. This is an annual obligation that we have with the old landfill on North Whitlock, that's a split between the city and county, to do so much testing per year for identity regulations. The cost, estimated cost of this work for two thousand nineteen is fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents.
Moving to approve.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? I guess my only question is, is that, that fourteen seven thirteen are half or is that the total?
It's the total.
Okay, so when they add up, okay.
We typically pay all of it and then send it.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? All in favor of approving the agreement, fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirteen sixty-two cents, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All right, next up is the SRI, Addendum Tax Sale Service Order. May I have a chance to review that, everything good? Do you have anything to say to it?
It's just, they're adjusting their fees for the first time in about ten years, and they're going to be twenty-two dollars a conference.